Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order to reconvene in open session. Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Amory Board of Education. The first item on the agenda tonight is the introduction of new staff members.
Okay, we have four new staff. If you could come up to the podium area so we could see you and we'll introduce you and have you give a speech. No, just kidding. Right up here at the podium so we could see you. We want to make sure you're on camera. We have in clubhouse a higher Drew Johnson. She's here. Drew, why don't you wave for us so everyone knows where you're at? Okay? And then we have middle school custodian Mitchell Pratt and middle school custodian Tracy Pratt. And bus driver, not new, but sort of new by contract, Noah McCoy. So here are our four new staff and I'm not sure if the board wanted to say anything or if anyone does want to give a speech, you certainly can.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming and thank you for your service to our school district, to our kids.
Thanks for accepting that you work here and I hope that you all see your faces for many, many more years to come. It's pretty awesome that you guys came on on a really chilly night to see us and say hi and it's always nice to see all the new hires and see who you guys are. So, thanks a lot, you guys.
Yep, we appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wood. We had one of two choices, either Noah was going to drive bus or Shar, so we picked Noah.
The next item on the agenda are the consent agenda items. I had the vouchers this month, so I will make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the vouchers are approved. I noticed that nobody was signed up for community comments, so we will skip on to the administrative reports and we'll start with Mr. Gould.
Mr. Fern, why don't you come up here and join me today too? A couple of months ago when things were getting, you know, pretty hot and crazy with COVID in our community and throughout, you know, we kind of came to you guys with a plan primarily spearheaded by the man here on my left to help us try to do things safely and effectively. And through hard work from our leadership, from Mr. Fern, from our coaches, from our athletes, from our families and from our parents, I am so proud and happy to announce that we really have had a successful winter sports season. And, you know, having lived the athletic director my life myself, I know the hours and the challenges that go into it, but during COVID and listening to the conversations he had coming out of the neighboring office and all of the rescheduling of events and changing of events and the conversations that I saw him having with coaches nonstop, couldn't be more proud of Mr. Fern and the entire athletic department and our coaches. And I think it's only fitting that Mr. Fern gets to talk about our sports update at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gould. Yes, we're not done yet. Hockey is over, boys hockey. We lost three to two a couple of weeks ago to Hayward. Girls hockey lost last week, but they had a very successful season. Girls basketball made the three-hour trip to Ashland, lost a competitive game there in the playoffs. Our boys are headed to Ashland this week on Thursday for another three-hour trip there. They got the third seat, so they have a first-round bye. And then our wrestlers, I'm sure you've heard some buzz about our wrestlers, just finished the individual state tournament. We had a fifth-place finisher, a fourth-place finisher, two third-place finishers, a second-place finisher, and two state champions. So, yes, kudos to our families, our athletes, our coaches. This isn't something that happens over three months. This is a lifetime of work into this. It's a year-round process, so they've done an awesome job. We've been very strict with our mitigation plan. I think we've been on top of things, but credit to our board for really challenging us. We had some tough conversations and we really thought things through and here we are. So, this weekend, we have the team state for wrestling. We'll do a state send-off again this Friday, get them shipped off to Adam's Friendship. They wrestle Saturday morning at 10:30 a.m. If they win the semifinals, state finals will be around 12:30. So, we're looking forward to it. Appreciate your guys' support. And things look a little different this year, but I think we can all agree it was a success. Thank you.
Awesome. That's very exciting.
All right, and we are really starting to get into the heart of what we're doing at the high school in terms of testing. As you know, we do have our ACT test date coming up. Next week on Wednesday, we're doing what's called our ACT Boot Camp Day, basically, where we are cramming in a whole lot of ACT test prep for our juniors. We've got a whole day. Our entire staff is devoted to helping our students, our juniors specifically, in small groups. Our freshmen, our sophomores, and our seniors will be working at home that day. They'll have projects and stuff they'll be working on ahead of time, but virtually every single staff member that we have available is going to be doing small group ACT test prep. And we're really excited. We think it'll help these kids out a great deal. And then two weeks later, on March 9th, we'll have our actual ACT test. And then a couple of weeks after that, our ninth and 10th graders will have what they call their ACT aspire and we'll kind of shift roles at that time and who is remote learning and who is in the building. So, for those that do have high school students at home, you will be getting some notifications about days where students may or may not be in the building, but it is the best testing environment that we can provide for kids and, of course, safest with trying to keep them spread out. We currently have the academic and career planning parent-teacher conferences going on yet tonight. It started on Thursday. All the feedback I've been receiving from staff, from parents, and myself as a parent is that it's been extremely successful. These are important conversations that our students get to have, not only with their teacher, but with their parent as well. And, you know, even for myself, I was sharing with a couple of teachers, there are things that your own child is much more willing to share oftentimes when you're involved in a parent-teacher conference rather than just sitting at the dinner table sometimes. And it's really good to get that information out in the open and so kids can plan their futures, and so that's going great tonight. As soon as we're done with the ACT, we will begin plugging away with our master schedule for next year. And that's about it from the high school.
Thanks.
Well, to follow up on assessment, we are also starting the forward test. We're actually about a month away from administering that test. We just sent out parent notices at the end of last week. They should be coming in the next couple of days to parents, a little bit about what we're doing in the schedule and the timelines and what the test is all about. And we'll be giving that test in grades three through eight and then also in 10th grade for social studies. We'll be starting some process of, there's some required online tools, trainings, and some things that DEPA requires that we go through, kids, and we'll be working on that in the next coming weeks. So, we're excited about that. We had parent-teacher conferences again tonight, basically, we did across the district. It's been interesting seeing it in a COVID environment and a new way of doing everything with the digital and the phones. And I think it's been kind of an interesting change. I see it opening up a lot of different avenues for parents in the future where our signup system now has been very interesting and very slick and very easy for parents to sign up. I can see where we would offer parents, you can either sign up to come in in person, here's the times at every teacher, or if you want a phone call or a different method, we'll try to accommodate you. And hopefully that will continue to increase participation. Part of the process that we started when we did our data retreat about two years ago was we started focusing on, these are the goals and the improvements that we want to make, but we wanted to get more student buy-in. And so, our third process and our third round of student individual goal setting, they set goals, we teach them about how to write them, and then there's rewards and structures built in for them to succeed and accomplish their goals. And we'll be going through our third check-in in our Warrior Time advisories, starting in the next week. And so, we're excited for that. That's our second year through this new process. Lots of other types of GT types of things are starting. Our sixth-grade Quiz Bowl is up and running and it's been kind of neat. A lot of the different opportunities that we normally would offer kids that are in more of the gifted and talented, such as Drama Rama or some of our drama experiences and theater experiences at the middle school weren't happening this year. So, we're excited to have Quiz Bowl. DI is going in strong right now and they'll be doing a digital over Zoom. They're going to be doing regionals over Zoom, so it'll be really fun to see how that works out. Curriculum-wise, our curriculum cycle has English from seven to 12 up for curriculum adoption, so they're busy working on meeting with different companies and taking a look at different resources and developing directions to choose new curriculum materials for the future. It's a big process because you need to do it right because you don't get it again for about 10 years. Other than that, I'm pretty excited just to have the kids back and running. It's been a really successful return. I've talked to a lot of different schools and I have friends that are principals at a lot of different places and they're, we're all kind of suffering through some of the same things, but there are districts and I know a lot of schools that aren't even in place right now. So, I've been really pleased to see the work that we did this summer and working with all the teachers and the board to set up a structure to keep our kids at school every day. And everything we seem to be doing is working really well because we're in place where a lot of schools aren't. So, that's a testament to all the work that everyone did. So, I appreciate all your support. That's what I have for you tonight.
Can I get a question for you?
Yep.
Have you noticed, and maybe all the other principals too, have you noticed if homework and grades, completion, engagement, has that helped kids being back in school? Have you seen a difference from when we were online to coming back face-to-face now or...
As far as participation in activity and kids...
Yeah, getting things completed and...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I would say that the changes that we made by putting in the cameras and learning more about Google Classroom and Google Meets and being online and streaming was tremendous and way better than what we did the year before. And we just were much more prepared and had more training, but it doesn't replace being in face-to-face instruction and it doesn't replace that connection with the kid and the motivation of that kid and the student. So, I would say that we have had way more success for the students that are in face-to-face and it's improved greatly when we came back. I think kids are learning more. And we know that because we take a look at the statewide data and what the effect that that had on reading and math. And I was really amazed, actually, math scores dipped more than reading statewide from the first round of the pandemic. But absolutely, I would say that, and I let others can talk behind me, but our kids are certainly responding better in person and we knew that would be the case. Yeah?
Okay.
Thank you.
Today was our third and final day that we had with Derek Francis on equity and racism. Really thought today narrowed right down to what we can do here at school. Some of the things that kids come up with and they ask questions and how do you respond to it? And so, it was really good. Two hours flew by and then we spent at the intermediate school, spent about another 15 to 20 minutes just processing what we had learned and just thought it was a great finish to the three in-service days that we've had with Derek. Also want to talk to you a little bit about, we just finished our benchmark testing for the winter in our star reading and math. And as we have told you before, we started, the fall was low and we knew that. That wasn't a big surprise, but in every single, we have reading and math in third, fourth, and fifth grade, just like the other buildings have their testing too. And we report out in two categories. One is the 25th percentile and below and the next one is the 50th percentile and above. And of course, you want fewer numbers in the 25% and below and more numbers in the 50 and above. And in all areas in third, fourth, and fifth grade, we raised. In the 50th percentile went up and the 25 went down. So, just kudos to the hard work that the teachers have put in to get those kids back in and get them going and learning again. The other thing that we have coming up is Kathy Vincent comes over and works with enrichment math students. And we had a round last fall and now she's just set up her next round for this spring and she works with fourth and fifth grade identified math students. That's it. Any questions? Thanks.
Okay, believe it or not, we are already planning for the 21-22 school year. And so, just recently, our 4K registration went out and any student or child who is four by September 1st of 2021 is eligible for 4K. And if they haven't received a letter from the district, they should please contact the elementary school. In addition to that, we also sent home our program option forms with our families or to our families. Those forms give, provide the opportunity for our families to choose the type of programming that they would like their child to be in for the upcoming school year. So, that includes the Children's House Multi-Age Montessori 4KK and our lower elementary, which is also a multi-age program for first grade through third grade. This coming school year, we're going to have a multi-age PBL, Project-Based Learning, environment. And then our, of course, our fabulous legacy program, which is 4K through grade two. So, families should keep their eyes open for those program option forums. If they have questions, they can contact me at the elementary school, Cheryl Meyer. And they are due April 19th and that just will help us when we go into making class lists for the new year. We are, at the elementary school, starting tomorrow, going to focus on Black History Month. We're going to be doing a lot of activities and, as Ms. Shock referred to, just the awareness of different, being respectful of different ethnicities. We are focusing at the elementary school on black history and we're very excited about the activities that we have planned for that. We have, as the other administrators have talked about, it's beginning to be assessment time. And for the first time at the elementary school, we will be assessing our children, our third graders, in the forward exam. So, I'm leaning on support from Mr. Benson and Ms. Shock as we prepare for that assessment. And Dave Hawkinson, our fabulous EL teacher, is going to be administering the access test, which the window opens next week. That is for all of our English language learners. Dave does a fabulous job working with that population of our students. And then last but not least, we just finished Kids' Heart Challenge, which is basically supported by Ms. Peterson, our FIAD teacher. And she does just a great job teaching the kids about being heart-healthy. It used to be called Jump Rope for Heart, but now it's called Kids' Heart Challenge because they challenge the children to drink more water, to be kind, and to move more. So, every morning over these announcements, we would talk about, what is your challenge that you're going to focus on today? The kids really, really embrace that whole challenge. Ms. Peterson does just a fabulous job of teaching the kids the importance of keeping your heart healthy. And to date, I just talked to her before this board meeting, we have raised $13,319 in online donations for the American Heart Association. So, very good cause and very good amount of money. And that is all for now. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick update from World of Pupil Services here. One is that each year we get a joint federal notification packet. That has some indicators regarding the Elementary and Secondary Schools Act side of it, more or less through general ed, and then the IDEA portion of that. One of the indicators, it's about 12 different indicators, is on educational environment and that's one where we're going to be focusing on over the next year, two years, in order to increase the amount of time our students with disabilities spend in the general ed environment. Now, that doesn't mean all students. We know that we still need very much strong services for kids that may need pull-out reading, math, behavior, for example, but it is an area in which we will be focusing on. You'll hear a little bit more of that in the student engagement portion of the evening tonight. Moving into how we make determinations regarding some of those services, our measurement tool for academics. You've heard about FastBridge, I'm sure, in earlier board meetings. It is a measurement tool that we are moving to and it monitors reading and math. And we just met today with representatives from every building and looked at what training, how training will look for our staff as we get that rolling. It's already implemented in the elementary schools, so our goal is to have it out K through 12 next year. And teachers will interact through an online training with modules that the company provides and then get support through identified building trainers over the summer and have a face-to-face date as well. Last, just a reminder that, as very many people know, that we contract some services for specialization. Couple of those are occupational therapy and physical therapy. And I look at this with really all the relationships in our lives and we've got to pay attention to relationships when we're in them. And so, periodically, we will visit with our occupational therapy staff, their supervisors, and that just occurred with respect to occupational therapy and physical therapy this month. So, they kind of share with us their feedback surveys that they get from our staff. We have a conversation about how we think things are going, what we can do to improve communication, share meeting dates, and so forth. And so, just like to report that we're really pleased with the work that physical therapy and occupational therapists are doing through our contract with Cumberland Healthcare. Any questions?
Do you know how many students receive occupational and physical therapy?
Offhand, I don't, but I can pull a report very easily and get you that information.
Thank you.
The next item will be the legislative update.
I only have one item and that is the face covering mandate. For the entire school year, we have been under really the umbrella of two mandates. One, our own, that we passed prior to the school year beginning, where all students and staff and visitors, whether they be in the building, on school transportation, or at school events, shall be required to wear a face covering. And then the state mandate, which has had three, four different generations over the course of the school year. About two weeks ago, that mask mandate was, in essence, repealed by the state assembly and the state senate. And then another mask mandate, which just looked just like the one prior to it, was passed or was issued, I guess, by the governor. And now it's heading towards the Wisconsin Supreme Court. But long story short, no matter what the state does, we have our own mandate and we'll continue to follow that mandate until we don't want to follow that mandate anymore and we don't feel a need for masks. But if we follow the lead of the state, we're going to be nothing but very confused. So, that's just plays our own trail, I guess. So, that's the update I have for you. Any questions on, please don't ask questions on that because, believe me, I'll never go there when it's, nor could they, frankly, because it makes very little sense to me.
Did you see I had a question? Is that why you said, "Don't ask?"
Yeah, not for me though, apparently. I have questions too.
What about the double mask mandate?
The double mask mandate. We haven't seen that one yet.
All right. Next item would be the transportation report by Mr. Tom Olsson.
I'm here to give you a brief report on the district transportation. What year it was for transportation. From here are some numbers for 2020. Total of bus miles, because of the short year, 130,487 miles. Bus repairs on the buses, $28,000, $241.23. Bus fuel, 19,694 gallons. Total van miles, 107,000 miles and 50. Van repairs, $7,393.24. Gas for the vans, 4,835 gallons. Now, all our 14 bus routes have cameras inside of them. Well, that's our new purchase bus up there, as you can see. This past summer, we installed seven outside cameras. That's new bus has the front dash camera. That's pretty nice. But there's the outside camera for the stop signs, the stops, so we can see cars go through our red lights.
And these are real pictures. These aren't mocked up. These really did happen.
This one here on the motorcycle, that was Andy Deeb passing me going to Jimmy John's.
Nice.
That happened to me on 65. There was four crotch rockets just past me.
I'm a little worried of that guy.
Uh-huh. You're in a hurry. There was a car up there going through our red lights and that happens quite often. And a lot of times with the bus driver, it doesn't have time, look at the car, get the license plate number, description, besides watching kids getting off and make sure they're safe. So, that's a good investment there.
Can we pass these pictures on to the county?
Yes.
And after that, it's out of our jurisdiction.
Unless they're in town, I'll just bring them to the local police station here, but if they're out, I'll send them up to Poe County.
Can you see the license plate on this one town that looks, I don't know if it's like completely...
Yep. Well, I can stop that frame by frame and I can zoom in. That's why I could tell that was Andy on that motorcycle. But otherwise, crotch rockets, motorcycles, license plates are so small, you won't be able to see it.
And there were four motorcycles, you said, in a row.
There was four of them and they were probably doing about 80 miles an hour.
On 65?
On 65. But I can stop that frame by frame and I can zoom in on the license plate, get them bigger. You know, it was from Minnesota. They were all from Minnesota.
Do they ever follow up with you and let you know what happens with law enforcement? Doesn't do that?
No.
And no one's contacted me yet.
It'd be such a hurry for Jimmy John's. They deliver. They're freaky fast. They're faster than you.
Yeah, that's why it's freaky fast. Just coming up in a couple of months, we're going to have our buses inspected by the state as usual, annual year. Randy, our bus mechanic's been doing an awesome job also. He's been filling in driving a bus when we were short on drivers. And I'd like to thank all our bus drivers and van drivers, especially our sub and van drivers, because they do a lot of sacrifice in doing their schedule just to make the transportation work. Do you have any questions?
Well, thanks to you too, Tom. This was all just right after Bus Driver Appreciation Week here and so, big shout-out to not just the bus drivers, but the van drivers, all the transportation department. Without you guys, we just couldn't get these kids to school and out there in these freezing temps and we know we can always count on you. You do a bang-up job, more hours than you probably...
Especially the COVID, it's hard.
Should put in.
When you get quarantined, get people, it's hard to find drivers, you know, but we're making it work.
It is. Yeah, thanks to you all.
Yep.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep, thank you. The last item on the administrative report section is the Student Engagement Strategic Plan update by Mr. Ron Gartner and Kate Wiesenbach, if she's here.
I don't see Kate here, but I am here, so I'll continue on here. Student Engagement Strategic Plan. So, this is, you know, an ongoing and really just an informational update. First, I'd just like to acknowledge all the folks and certainly everybody in this room has played some role and continues to play some role in the student engagement and this plan. But certainly, the People's Services vertical team here, which you see in the first slide, these folks have been, you know, really integral in terms of reviewing some of these goals and providing input to this report tonight, as has, like I said, really all the administrative So, just...
So just to remind everyone, we've got a lot of different initiatives happening in the school district of Amory. We've got SEL supports in curriculum. We've just completed an alignment with some of the power standards that we're focusing on and supporting students with social, emotional learning needs. We've got positive behavioral interventions and supports in the green here, where we're tracking behavior data. We're providing interventions for kids that might need reminders in terms of following classroom expectations or school-wide. Safety and wellness, health and the safety of our students, of course, is a focus. And the school climate and relationships that we see among students to students and staff to students and staff to staff in all our schools. Trauma-sensitive practices. Mental health, that I just mentioned a moment ago. And of course, the big question at the end of the day is how does this, how is this all relevant to what we're teaching and how we're interacting with students on a day-to-day basis? So just a reminder here of all the things that we have at work. So moving on to the action plan and goals. These have not changed throughout this year, from this year to last, and that's because these are really big project, big-ticket item things. Increasing student belongingness and engagement, reducing at-risk factors, and increasing academic growth and closing gaps. So we're looking to improve the learning environment for all students in order to increase student engagement, both social, emotionally, and academically. And so you'll dig into a couple of things here next and what that means. One is in order to figure out where you are and where you're going, you need to know where students are and where staff are. And so to that end, we really want to make sure that we're providing opportunities for input for students. How are we doing in relating to you? So we have welcome surveys, for example, middle and high school. We have youth risk behavior surveys that are done every other year and school climate surveys that are pulled from a behavior program that we use called SWISS. Those tell us where we are in terms of what are the students' perceptions about where they're being taught, by whom, and what those relationships are like. Also done some positive programming and positive behavior interventions and supports. We've K through eight rolled out the second step curriculum. PK through eight, I should say that. Lisa Benson will chide me if I don't put PK in here. I've got to remember our little guys and girls. And so, and also the SWISS behavior data system, which we're using really K through eight, and also tracking behaviors even at the high school, the location of where those are incurring so that we can kind of triangulate where do we need to work on? What spot in the building? Where do we need better traffic monitoring? Where do we need to improve our relationships with students? We also have a small group interventions. Those can be social interventions. They could be academic as well. And so that's fairly new over the last couple of years. And then finally, this one was real difficult to do because it was added last February, but are increased in training with support staff in terms of what they can do to build and strengthen relationships with kids. So that if I'm a bus driver, if I'm a custodian, if I'm working in the kitchen, I can take away some of these practices that our instructors are getting through trainings and professional development opportunities. So that's the one that we want to continue to focus on. Of course, having been closed down last March, it's pretty difficult to put that one into place. So finally, well, or number two, I should say, reducing student at-risk factors. So again, in order to know where we're at with that risk factors, we need to do some monitoring to find out where we are. So that comes from some of the SWISS data that we're able to have. It also comes down to monitoring student attendance and addressing chronic absenteeism. Again, that was a tough one to do last year. Just fell at the wrong time on our radar, so we'll definitely be revisiting that conversation in terms of attendance. And then integrating trauma-sensitive schools and policies and practices. That is certainly something that you've heard even today, tonight, in this board meeting, when you talk about the professional development that we had with Mr. Derek Francis today, and how do we navigate difficult conversations with some of our staff, myself included, having come from a very diverse background. All right, let's see here. I'm trying to navigate two different sets of notes here. So our third goal here is increasing academic achievement and closing gaps. This is where I wanted to kind of circle back to that joint federal notification packet. Educational environment, you know, indicates where kids are receiving their instruction. One thing that we know is that the more students receive special education services in a different environment than their general ed peers, their academic achievement tends to be flat or go down. So one of the things that we want to look for, and this has not changed from last year, but continue to look at what we can do to nurture co-teaching, supported teaching, so that might be a para educator in the classroom, supporting a small group of students with special needs in the midst of their general ed peers. So there's some ideas that we can do that. We're also, things like the Stop and Think Room that we've implemented, those are places where students are able to receive general ed services, not in a special ed environment. So those are important layers to that. So we'll continue with that goal moving into next year. A piece of that too is evaluating, building schedules and assignments to make sure that, you know, all of what we're doing is focused on delivering sound academics and social, emotional interventions for kids. Some of that's been happening in terms of looking at, again, the Stop and Think Room, the middle school, looked at its school schedule as a whole and went to that block scheduling. That's something that is another way of really making the best use of common intervention times and sometimes more efficient use of staff to deliver what kids really need in order to move forward academically. And then finally, again, I've focused a lot on this, on sharing data. So one of the last ones here, and again, this has not changed from last year because it's a difficult thing to do in one year, right? But to be able to enhance your data sharing practices, so much of our data about kids is shared. I think from the instructor level to administrators on down, there's a lot of data that we interact with every day and look at, but it's also difficult sometimes, what data is best shared, when and by whom, in order to make a real impact on the instruction they're getting that moves them in the right direction academically. It's big work. It's messy work, but I think it's well worth doing. And our People Services team, having had a, some of them working in two buildings or working to support grade level transitions, they see that. And we're really looking for their ideas on how we can just enhance that data sharing. So with that, I know that's a whirlwind and a lot in, I don't know how long it's been here, but just to close up, I think again, we're focused on our big three, our professional learning communities, our trauma-sensitive practices, and positive behavior interventions and support. But it involves every single member of the school district in order to get this stuff moving in the right direction. Any questions?
On number two, reduce student at-risk factors. You said, made a point about maintaining and expanding the TSS practices district-wide for trauma-sensitive schools. Is there an example of what has been done maybe this year or recently to expand how we handle those trauma-sensitive integration for students?
Well, I know one of the things I could point to are a lot of our professional development hours and opportunities that we've had, particularly led by, you know, either our middle school counselors, Kate Wiesenbeck, Julia Montgomery Reese. I've done a number of them of just how to interact with students in a positive way so that, you know, we can continue to maintain relationships with students that have either difficult family lives, difficult behaviors, those sorts of things. Again, I'd point to, I guess, Derek Francis as an example of that as well. I would also point to, for example, recently, we've had, we have a crisis protocol for tragedies, for suicide. And we also had a couple staff counselors go to a suicide post-vention training that really talks about not so much what to do in the immediate aftermath, because we have our own set of protocols to do that. That's unfortunately occurred here in our community. But the wider impacts of that, what happens a week from now, two weeks from now, that we can focus on to reduce the possibility of others being impacted negatively by something like suicide. Certainly, I can pull some more trainings. We've got just a list of trainings.
So most of it is just trainings for staff then?
Absolutely, yes.
Not necessarily protocols or programs or things that...
Right, yep, trainings, trainings for staff.
The change is a lot of the way we approach certain things. The student does, if there's something that the student had or does that is an issue, or the teacher suspended, now we say, "You know what? You're going to be working in the Stop and Think Room, and while you're there, we're going to be spending considerable time training, discussing, processing, having the right role by having what happened. Re-carrying that conversation with the teacher or the other student to do the interventions, mediations." And it has a lot to do also with the process of the ball to the other side. Kind of a different approach to less punitive, perhaps, restoring it.
Yeah, and that's been, I mean, that's been a kind of a thing that's been going on for quite a while. I mean, you guys have been working on that for quite a while. I was just wondering if there was anything new or expansive or...
We can definitely get you a list of trainings.
No, no, that's fine. I was just wondering how that was being, you know, more brought into with the bullet point there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for the administrative reports. The next, we're on to informational items. There's only one item, and that is the convention recap by Erin Hosking.
Yeah, so I virtually attended the state convention a few weeks ago, and it was great to hear from various speakers. The Anna Marie Chavez, who is the school board, the national school board new president, and our state superintendent, and Governor Evers, all addressed the convention. And it was fabulous. Maybe you all have seen, but we, school board members get the school news, and Derek Meyer was featured in the school news magazine that came out, and he was also recognized at the convention. It would have been fun to be there because they, you know, let them come up on stage and everyone applauds and they recognize their school, and it's neat to be there. And it was kind of sad to just be like, "Yay, on the computer." But they did, they did highlight all the teachers of the year. And I just actually was a reader for, for the finalists, for the teachers of the year through the Herb Cole Scholarship. And man, I mean, to be, to be selected is, I mean, there's just so many amazing, amazing teachers. It was, it was hard. I said to my husband, "I feel like I'm ranking them all so high. It's a good thing they get read by many different people," because there's just so many great educators. So really, that he was selected and recognized at the convention was neat too. I attended a couple of breakout sessions on school finance and social and political discourses in schools, which was really actually great to consider policies and how to, or think about things before they happen, because if we have our policies in place, then it's easier to navigate some of the big social things like, like the Black Lives Matter, George Floyd stuff. Obviously, we weren't in school, but they talked about if school had been in session, how would students have responded? How would teachers have responded? And so if you already have policies in place about student attendance and whether students can be holding rallies or walkouts or different things like that. So, so there were some good things that I think that I'll be bringing to the board for us to consider. But overall, it was, it was a different convention to attend virtually, but really some good information, so. Oh, and I also was the delegate to the, to the, what is it called? Where we pass resolutions and discuss resolutions. And that was interesting also. The, one of the big ones was encouraging school districts to, to eliminate mascots and names that are, could be offensive. And so that was one that was discussed a lot. It was discussed in previous years also, in the past, at least last year, they wanted to tie money to it, and this year, there was not money tied to it. And so it did actually pass as a resolution that, you know, it's really just a wish list of things that the school boards, that the school, the association of school boards takes to administrators, but that was an interesting one, so. Yeah, that's my update.
Thank you.
We'll be able to attend next year.
Yeah, yeah, wow. It was, yeah, it was interesting to just be sitting there at my kitchen table for hours on end, but...
Okay, well, thank you for the report. We are on to action items now. The first action item on the agenda are the donations to the district.
We have two donations to the district. The first is from the Deer Park Lions Club. They have donated $250 to the Angel Fund, just be split up between our four buildings. And the second is also to the Angel Fund from Amory Express Hometown Liquor and Save-A-Lot Food Stores. They raised through their Warrior Gas Pump, $1,273, and that again goes to the Angel Fund. So you would need to take action to accept those two donations.
I'll move, we accept the donations?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the donations to the district are accepted, and the next action item would be the second reading of board policies, 178, 372, and 821.
Okay, 178 remains unchanged. 372, you asked that we put some language in there about advisors for student publications, so the language in green reads, "The board gives discretion to the faculty advisors of student publications to ensure that all content is appropriate for a school environment." There was no change for 821, and that is it for the policies to review as a second reading. And again, you would need to take action if you wanted to do so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the policies as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the policies as presented are approved. The next action item would be the 2022 Spanish and French trip by Mr. Ruhl.
Okay, we're also doing a little planning for the future here. This is a new venture for us and actually combining the France trip and our Spanish club trip into one trip. Profay Johnson and Mademoiselle Geiger have talked about and discussed this as an option, thinking that it would actually improve their experience. One unique thing that you'll see is in the past, they've historically always done a family stay when they go on this type of trip, but because of, you know, COVID and other situations, eliminating that and just doing a tour through both France and Spain through a company that I've used before, EF, that we've used for our Washington DC trips. It's a reputable travel company, one of the biggest ones in the United States. You'll see the itinerary there. It looks quite impressive, something I think any of us would want to go on if we certainly could. The cost is there, but the cost is all absorbed by the families. They paid for the trip. The scheduled dates would put it over spring break in 2022, so as to limit the amount of time that they would miss from school. And of course, they have their own... And of course, they have their own option to buy extended insurances and refund programs. As you remember, we had to cancel our trip to France last year. The Spanish trip never got off the ground this year, and we actually had to cancel Washington DC, New York once again as well, just because things are opening up. So can I say with 100% certainty that this will happen? Absolutely not, but, you know, that's, that's up to the families, and we certainly want to give them every opportunity to try to make this trip happen.
So you would need action to approve that for March of 2022 if you so choose?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to try to get something in place. It's, you know, my daughter is supposed to go to Scotland this, this past summer. They rescheduled it for this summer. That's been canceled now as well. Things are pretty tough over there, but if we could at least get it on the calendar and follow along until we see, we hear otherwise. Is there a date that they can back out to tell?
Yeah, I mean, once they're enrolled in the trip, they, they are enrolled at the trip, and then they're kind of at the mercy of the insurance policies. Basically, about 45 days out from when the trip would happen is really kind of their point of no return. But we have strongly encouraged, in talking to both the instructors, I encourage them, just put travel insurance as part of the cost here. Nobody would want to travel without it at this point. It's just a smart thing to do.
Yeah. Are we going to be looking at our travel insurance policies anytime coming up soon? I don't, I just, I think we should revisit some of those things.
We certainly can. It would depend on the vendor, I imagine. Each of their policies would probably look different based on, but, but we can certainly look at those before we start to travel again, and we're not traveling yet this school year.
Right, so we have time, right?
Yeah, why don't we put that on the calendar for right after the school year is done and start looking at that? Because those trips won't happen until next year.
Yeah, I think I would feel...
Yeah, it's a good idea. We haven't done that in quite some time.
Right, I think I would feel comfortable doing that, but yeah, trying to get this trip off the ground for these kids, so. With that, I'll move that we schedule the 2022 Spanish-French trip combined.
If we're still dealing with this in March of 2022, that's going to be sad, but...
I know, but it's a, it's a realistic, you know...
Absolutely.
The way that things are looking, what, what we're hearing from Scotland and the countries over there, it's, it's actually realistic that we may not, so. But I'll move to, made the motion to go ahead and approve that, get that on the calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the 2022 Spanish-French trip is approved. All right, the next action item would be the oven purchase for Lean Elementary.
Last month, Stacy Nelson was here to give a report, her annual report from food and nutrition, and she talked to you about the age of the ovens in district, and she shared with you that the oven in the elementary school is original, 1967 vintage, so that makes it 53, if not 54 years old. The only thing that's better than seeing this in picture form is to visit it, and I visited it a couple of weeks ago. It is quite a piece of work. It is time, and we have budgeted this through our food service fund balance to be able to do that. So there are four bids. The recommendation there is the Asterix, which is Streck Equipment out of Warsaw. They're all of comparable price. That is the lowest of the four, and it is what Stacy is recommending.
I realize that Stacy isn't here due to other reasons.
She is, she is not, but for the price being the same, it offers the greatest quality of the four, and it's also what she's most familiar in working with, as is her staff. Those were her reasons for recommendation.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Does that, it probably doesn't have any trade-in value, but does that include like the disposal and, you know, cycling, you know?
I am not, I'm assuming, but then, then there is the process of hookup, which we work with our own staff to be able to do that. In regards to trade-in value, we would be happy to deliver it to any of your homes if you want to use it for yourself.
Andrew.
Andrew.
I vote Andrew.
I do, yeah. It is still working.
It's still working, it's still working. It's quite a, quite a scene.
Baking, baking, baking business on the side.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm thinking Thanksgiving dinner would, you know, that would facilitate. Fire that baby up a couple times a year.
Well, it's made 53 years, so it had to be good at one point.
Older than I am, so I don't...
I'll make a motion that we purchase the Streck equipment, Combi Oven.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion approved. The next item would be the land purchase.
At two previous board meetings, you have had conversation about the land across the street from the high school, if you will. And you, as a board, have authorized me to work with the seller, and we have come to amenable terms. And what you see here is the resolution for the approval of the purchase of the property located across the street. And I don't want to belabor the point, but I'm going to read it to you. It's not incredibly long, so bear with me. Whereas the School District of Amory Board of Education deems it desirable and in the best interest of the district to acquire the property located at 560 Minneapolis Avenue in the city of Amory and the county of Oak, state of Wisconsin. Now therefore be it resolved that the district acquire such property under such terms and conditions as the Board of Education and their discretion deem advisable. Resolved further, the district administrator of the School District of Amory is hereby authorized, directed, and empowered to execute for and on behalf of the school district any and all documents required in connection with the purchase of the property noted therein, including but not limited to purchase agreements. So that's the resolution before you, if you so choose to purchase the land across the street.
I think you should strike the 560 address, because I don't think the property has an address, actually.
Okay.
I think it's 560 that building site.
I, I thought it was based on what I had received from the realtor.
In our dealings, it's always been just XXX.
Okay.
Because without a building, generally a property doesn't have that, so.
Okay.
I would change that to just that.
Fair enough.
An address. And I'll make the motion to, to approve the resolution.
Oh, I do have a couple of questions first. The nine building sites that were on the property, right?
I missed the first part of your question, sorry.
The nine building sites that were on the property? Was it nine, right?
There were, it was coded differently based on portion of property, yes. Okay, go ahead.
The lots, right, that were?
Yeah.
And it was the intent that we were thinking of doing the CTE houses there, correct?
That would be part of what we would do, yes.
Okay. And do we know when we would start those in those lots?
Well, we are currently finishing the, the third home. We have the fourth home, the lots for that home to purchase, so that would be next year's home. So it would be the year after next, if that's what our intention was.
Yeah.
But we would have to put in infrastructure?
Right.
Before we could even consider building.
Yes, we would need to work with the city on that.
Yeah.
And then, are we, are we planning long-term to, to fill all these lots or not? Or are we going to build a house every year, or?
Right now, we have built a home each of the last four years. There is talk about trying to do something a little slower and a little more extravagant, as in a larger home, a different format. The first year, we built the 1,700 square foot home. The second year, we did about the same. The one we're doing now is a little bit bigger and a little bit different design. So yeah, there's talk of continuing to do that, but maybe at a slower rate of pace. And the, the nature of those lots and the location of those lots, the topography, if you will, changes perhaps what we would do with those areas. So the intent is to continue to build, but exactly what? I think it's too far out to say that.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or discussion?
Well, and so this land, I mean, there's, at this point, it's not locked in to doing any specific thing.
It is not.
There's the discussion of using lots for building houses.
Yes.
There's Derrick Meyer's idea of doing a school farm. Other possibilities exist. At this point, we're just talking about acquiring the land so that we have it and we can continue to discuss what will...
The resolution would be for the purchase of the land. What we would seek to do with that is the next big conversation, and I think there needs to be more folks than the board and myself involved in that conversation, because there's lots of good ideas that I've already heard from people that work here and live here that, about this land. But none of those conversations are really pertinent or relevant if you don't own the land. So this is the opportunity to do that. And in the logic we've talked about here over the course of the last couple of months, this is the last opportunity for adjacent land to the district, because again, there's no other place you're going to expand in any other direction. And if it's ever available in 20 years, it will have passed through somebody else's hands prior to that probably. So this is sort of our last stop to do that.
I will second the motion to approve the resolution of purchasing the property.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the board resolution of approving the purchase of property is approved. Okay, the next action item would be the high school through wall flashing.
Last meeting, you asked that I bring back the building and grounds slides that you have seen before. It's a pared-down version of that. And what you'll see here is summary form of what we've done and what we are looking to do. The first slide, that pie chart, is from April of 2017, original to that date and time. It, it shows you what each piece of the pie has been devoted via referendum, thanks to our community, for each of those areas. And the area we're talking about here is in essence building and grounds 700,000. The next slide is 2020, 2021. This is, at this point in time, sort of old news. These are all items that were completed. This is what you saw last, well, this is what you saw prior to this present school year in the month of April, and we asked for your approval to do these items, and these items were fully complete. So that's how the $700,000 was used in the 2021 school year. For 2122, which is the upcoming school year, the list of items that you see there is what's being proposed. You haven't acted on any of those things for next school year. Now, the trick is to do this in April or May, we get timed out in regards to getting the work done, because some of this work needs to be done in the summer, and it has to be done, and you have to get it on the calendar in order to get it done in the summer. That's why you're seeing this in February as opposed to April or May. And the two items we're talking about are through-wall flashing, which George is going to speak to, and then the gym floor we talked about last month, and Jeff's going to speak to that. So the slides that you see on the screen, you will note are from the high school, and George is going to walk you through what you're seeing there. So I'm going to turn it over to you, George.
Yeah, so Mr. Durfler and I, I should start out by saying I could think of a million other things that I'd rather be talking to you about than through-wall flashing, but it's, it's an issue with many, many buildings that were constructed this way. So we had, we met with Troy from DLR, or LHB, excuse me, our architect that ran the project at the elementary school. We have the same scenario here happening at the, at the high school. Building Restoration Corporation cut some test holes last summer into the high school so we could identify the problems and, and identify what kind of material was used to create through-wall flashing. And that top, that picture there, Troy felt that, yeah, this, basically just the mortar joints are in terrible shape. The brick is taking on water. The brick is actually like a sponge, and that water gets in between the, the block like you see in here, and then, and then the brick is just basically a pretty face that they put on there.
How folks understand where that picture is taken? Where is that?
That's, that's at the, on the roof, the gym part, the mezzanine or the penthouse they call it. And the next one, that's, that's what I was going to, I couldn't read that, but the actual product they feel is actually melting and oozing out at the area where the through-wall flashing is supposed to meet the outside of the brick. Here's one of those test holes. They talk about continuous sweeps. The way they did the sweeps over there were just short runs to the brick. Basically, any of that water that gets in that wall right there attaches itself to that wick and then actually comes out of the wall. So when you don't have a continuous sweep in there, basically that water will just sit in there, and it'll go down either holes or poorly constructed or deteriorating through-wall flashing membrane.
And if you remember from our tour over there, there are portions of the wall we're talking about here that are completely different colors. And that's not because it's, the brick's different color, that's because it's full of water. And that is not what's supposed to be happening.
This, this picture would reflect, the through-wall flashing is actually that black piece that's laying flat there. That actually is supposed to come out to the edge or a little bit farther to the face of the brick, and because it's not, it was cut off before the outside of the brick, any water that actually comes down the face of that gets underneath that through-wall flashing and then flows in there. And the issue is, is when the water sits in that cavity, obviously it freezes, and we'll see some slides at the end where it's actually, the bricks are actually popping. This is a new one, another one about basically the shape of the flashing in there. There's supposed to be a turn bar on the top of that flashing where it actually attaches to the brick, and that's supposed to be culled. So when water comes down the face of that block on the inside, it hits that flashing, goes to the sweeps, and then goes out onto the roof or onto the ground, depending on where you're at. That's just loosely laid in there. So any water that basically gets in there runs behind that flashing and just builds up inside that wall cavity. There's another picture of that. I believe that one talks a little bit about the lintels. There's so much moisture in there that the lintels above the windows or doors, that water sits in there, they're rusting out. There again is just, the construction was poor. It was never, there was never a turn bar put on it. And here's the results of what happened when the water gets in there. At the elementary school, we had a little different scenario. We actually had the moisture kind of getting on the inside block where it was popping the paint. The paint wouldn't stick. Here, most of that water, because of that insulation that's in there, is coming to the, to the face side. What happens is it fills up with water, it freezes, and those, those bricks are breaking. Typically, that's, that's probably at least half of the thickness of the brick that's already popped off. Some of them are actually holes. In fact, on the bottom picture, that, that one brick, that had to be replaced because it actually was busted right through. Underneath that window, that black there, that's, that's a scenario of water in the wall. It's, it's moss or something growing actually in the mortar, and that's, that's reflective of the through-wall flashing above the window failing, and all that water just goes around there and sits underneath that one. Here's a corner that's in really rough shape. And why we're here, besides the fact that we, we need to get on the schedule, everybody's built, everybody's busy in the, in the summertime, we just have to, I don't know that we could make another winter where we would be able to basically see right through into the insulation, so.
Because what you see here is on the list, in essence, the building and grounds list for all the deferred maintenance for the entire district, and you've seen that list before, much of it is at the high school. We're simply seeking to do triage at this point, because to do all of the through-wall flashing for the entirety of a high school, which does need to be done, would mean millions of dollars, and that's not something that fits into any kind of building and grounds budget. That's a referendum piece if we choose to do that. But this can't wait, to use the words that George just used, to go through another winter. We don't really have the luxury to make it through another winter. We don't really have the luxury to make it through another winter. So we have to devote some money to this now. The portion of brick that we would do is the portion around the high school library. That's not original to the high school, that's 1997. So it's newer. So that's a little disappointing that that portion is already in the shape it's in in 23 years. But that's the shape it's in in 23 years. So we have got to address that.
Yeah, and it's, it's pretty unsightly as well. I think I did have you guys, we toured that, and it's even gotten worse since that tour, so.
So this would be the area of like the, the library. And then, we looked at some pictures above the gym or by the gym, right?
Yeah.
Would that be, would that be part of this project as well?
More than likely it won't. If we just get that library done where it's-
That's, that's the number one priorities by the library area.
Yeah, and we allocated $250,000.
It's from door to door, if you go into the, would be the north side of the high school. It's from one entry door around the library to the other entry door. And just that alone is a quarter of a million dollars. So to do the whole high school is obviously way more than that. This is just what we can do now.
Yeah, they'll take a full three courses of brick out of there, and then hopefully try and match it the best they can. And then put it back. With the, with the through wall flashing, that'll stand the test of time, and it'll be, it'll be installed correctly.
Do we know how long that project would take?
It'll, it'll take, if, if everything went well, it'll take right up until basically the week before school starts, just like we did at the-
Exactly what happened at the elementary. It was very touch and go in August to get that done. Because we did some interior stuff in the elementary as well that was related to that, but it was really close.
Yeah, and they dug a five-foot trench around the elementary. We're probably not going to have to dig that deep around the high school simply because we don't have any waterproofing to do. The way they landscaped that, that addition over there with the, with the mounding, they had to basically do that. And then there was a footing wall there that was above, in the, it came up basically inside the classroom and areas, and we were having issues with water. But this is going to take about the same time because, as you can see, the concrete runs to the brick, so.
What I was thinking is that there was concrete right up to that, yeah.
Yeah, they're going to have to cut that and repour that. So, fingers would be crossed that we'd be able to get it all done in that short two-month window.
And I echo George's sentiments, this is not what we want to be spending our money on. This is not what we want to go to refer and report. This is the price of doing business. In order to be able to have school at the high school, we can't have our walls just crumbling down to nothing. So we got to address this, and this is just what we can do now.
Yeah, and Troy, Troy is working on creating bid documents. So, when the RFQ goes out, or RFP goes out, they'll be able to, to look at that and, and look at the detail exactly what needs to be done. So, anyone that happens to bid it will be bidding the, you know, the same criteria.
And that would just depend on the individual contractor, if they were going to do the cement work there too, or if we have to contract that out separately?
It would, it would go through one general, basically, and they, they would look at, looking at a local, unless they did their own cement work. A lot of these restoration guys typically, they specialize in the flashing and the brick work, the flat work. They would, I would recommend that they give the local guys here a shot at bidding it, so. But I'm not for sure.
And the reason that the original work, the through wall flashing work, isn't local guys' is because this is specialty work that local guys, in most cases, just don't do.
Yeah, when we put out the RFP, quite honestly, we had two people bid it, no locals. And one company was BRC out of the cities. The other company, I think, was a couple, two, three states away. And of course, they bid it so high that, you know, thankfully, the more local person got it. But there's a lot of, from what I'm understanding, a lot of these companies, two, three states away, are throwing such a number at it that they're getting them because nobody else is bidding them. So hopefully, things will slow down a little bit, and-
So this is a building and grounds item that you're seeing here in February, simply because it's got to get on the calendar for July and August to get done, if this is what you want to do.
And we're just hoping that we're going to get bids on this, right?
Yeah, yeah, DLR, in their fee structure, they'll, they'll handle the bid docs, they'll handle the RFPs. And we'll, I, I don't know if we'll have a silent bid opening like we did before, but I'm just crossing my fingers that we get a few people bidding it. But we would start that process pretty quick with your approval.
Kind of got to be done.
It's, yeah, yeah.
We really have a choice, do we?
We think we got to go for a problem now. If those holes start opening up, we'll, they'll have a condo there, so.
I'll make a motion, we approve the high school through wall, through wall flashing project.
Second, second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, the high school through wall flashing proposal is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next item would be the high school gymnasium floor.
The other portion of building and grounds that needs to be done early in the calendar year if you're going to do it, is the gym floor. Jeff was here last meeting to talk to us about that, and you charged him with getting some more information on these three bids, and he is here with that information.
From my Legos tonight, so we'll see if we can do a little show and tell here. So I'll just review what we talked about last time. Our current floor, it's a, there's really not a subfloor. When you look at these new gym floors, it's really everything underneath it that makes a difference. And I'll get into some of that. Our current floor is basically a clip and channel on concrete. There's no subfloor. You look at these new floors, you got pads on here, you got two layers of plywood, and then you got the floor. So if you ever hear one of our players hit the deck or hit the floor during a game, and it sounds absolutely awful, it is awful because they're basically hitting concrete. It's more of a, you know, that's like a safety precaution. But when we look at, this is the original floor since 76. It's 45 years old roughly. The last time it was sanded was in 2008. And there's not a lot left of this maple layer on top to sand it down again. And it was last sanded in 2008, and you want to do that about every 15 years. So we're potentially on the docket for, for that as an option. Tonight, the conversation is, is about the new gym floor though, but I wanted to bring that information because I think we asked last time, maybe when was the last time it was sanded? And as I left here, George responded rather quickly on that. So it was 2008, and that was the middle school the same year, I believe. And I think next year, we'll talk about sanding that floor down. We did secure three bids. We have bids from a company called Basement. They're out of Appleton. Jay Wood out of Hudson, and Schmidt is on the east side of the state also. Jay Wood and Schmidt, essentially, I'll just go back to that slide. Jay Wood and Schmidt literally bid the same floor. Alright? They both use, it's called a Connor Sports Floor. There's 14 NBA teams that use Connor Sports Floors in their arenas. We are not looking to get a bid on an NBA floor. We did not ask for their NBA caliber floor, but they are a well-known company. So, again, Jay Wood and Schmidt bid the same floor. One was $36,000 cheaper than the other. So, my communication with Schmidt has decreased significantly because Jay Wood is local, they've done work in our, our district before, and they're cheaper for the same floor. Alright, moving on here. Maple Flooring Manufacturing Association. These are all different things that we look at when, when we're installing a new floor. And the different standards, area of deflection, basketball rebound, shock absorption, surface friction, vertical deflection. I don't want to explain all those to you, but as I'm having conversation with these folks, they're talking about these items, and that's what they pride themselves on. They get a third party to come out and to test them to make sure that they're up to their standards. Warranty was a question, what is the warranty? All of these quotes, there's a one-year parts and labor against manufacturer defects. They all have a one-year warranty. I guess you could say, you know, if a, if a pipe breaks and we got a major water issue in the gym or whatnot, that's going to fall under like our insurance policy, obviously. But they'll work with us on basic defects within that first year. That's part of their warranty, and they all have the same warranty. Nothing varied between the three bids. Basement floors, they are the, the cheapest bid that we've talked about. They have two layers of plywood. They have these performance pads on the bottom. So we've got the performance pad, two layers of plywood, and then you got your maple flooring. It's a floating floor. What that means, it's not anchored down. Alright, so if you took the roof off of the ceiling, you could essentially lift the floor up. Where the other floor that I'll be talking about is anchored to the floor. I'm a fan of anchoring your, you know, the, the gym floor to the concrete because it could be there for another 45 years. And we got 105-degree days, and we got negative 36-degree days, and we got humidity, and there's a lot going on there with the weather with where we live. Basement, references out of Bruce. The high school, Cameron Elementary, Oak Claire Elementary, UW River Falls has a, has a new complex. They did work there. Positive feedback from, from those districts. I can tell that I got positive feedback and referrals from all of these school districts. You know, I mean, unless you have a major issue with your floor, you know, and it's serving its purpose, you don't really know any differed. It's kind of like when you're riding your own vehicle. When I get my little Civic, I think that thing rides smoothly, and then I go riding a Buick, and I'm like, well, I'm missing out on the next level here. So you don't really know, you know, your, what caliber gym floor you're really on until you get on multiple gym floors and, you know, look at the different items that they measure there that I talked about with the Maple Flooring Association. We'll move on to Jay Wood. They have, this is a, this is the model that we're looking at here. We have two layers of plywood. We have these performance pads on the bottom. We got a steel channel in the middle here, and that will be anchored to the floor. And that will keep things intact, and we have our maple flooring on top. The maple flooring on top, again, it's, it's, a lot of them are very similar, but again, it's what's underneath here. So this, what separates this is they have a steel channel. I think they said there's 2000, 2400 square foot of this that will run in our gymnasium, and that will be anchored to the floor in our high school if we chose that option. In terms of references, Grantsburg, Prescott, Hudson, Amory. New Richmond is also on there, it's not on this slide, but New Richmond did work with Jay Wood at their high school. It is Grantsburg High School, it is Prescott High School, it is Hudson High School. And I bring that up because these are where they're playing their varsity contests, obviously. It's a, it's a classroom, we hold our FIDE classes there, graduation and whatnot. But it's your main performance floor is what I'm getting at. So I would look at a higher caliber floor as our main performance floor. You know, something we, we look at once every 40, 45 years. Schmidt Flooring, same, same concept, same vendor, they use the Connor floor. Nothing but good things said about Schmidt also. They just happen to be a little higher in price. And I don't know if some of that has to do with location. I know they're passionate about their installation crews and individuals that they have working for them. They do a lot of work with colleges, you see UW Madison on there. But they happen to be a little more expensive, and we could get the same floor for $36,000 cheaper. Alright. I have, my, my recommendation to the board would be this clip and channel, non-floating floor. Okay, so it's anchored to the floor. This company put our floor in at Leon Elementary. Again, they've done work locally here in the Middle Border Conference. Again, that anchored floor helps with the buckling of the floor and the humping of the floor when we are talking about the elements. The bleachers, we obviously have beautiful bleachers at the high school. Basement, they're our cheapest bid there, they have the floating floor. They will remove our bleachers, they will re-sand our current floor there to match the new floor. Jay Wood, the company I'm recommending, they will put a new floor in where our bleachers are and then put the bleachers back in place where they were originally. So we'll get a complete new floor from end to end. We won't have the old floor underneath our bleachers. So that's a benefit there. When you look at Jay Wood's floor, again, the floor that I'm recommending, we get twice the amount of pads underneath here. That's huge compared to Basement's floor. You're looking at two pads per square feet if we go with Jay Wood. With Basement, we would get one pad per square foot. I've talked about the price, I've talked about local schools that have gone with, with Jay Wood. I talked with a gentleman that's from Amory, works for Hilliard. They help with waxing the floors. He did have good things to say about, about all three vendors. He does like the idea also of a, of an anchored floor. And I, I called him earlier just because he is local, he is from Amory, and he has a lot of pride when it comes to dealing with our floors. He helped us last summer, and wants to continue to be a part of that process in terms of waxing our floors and make sure that we're maintaining them. We've had some discussions based on, we may be looking at a new gym floor, so. Billy Beer King is who I'm referencing here, but somebody who works in the industry and knows more about these floors than, than I do. So I tried to do as much research as possible. I'm definitely not an expert. I've been staring at these things for a solid two and a half weeks. Do you guys have questions at this time?
So you'd mentioned the basement floors, they would not put new floors under our bleachers.
Correct.
Right, so we could have a FIDE class or various practices going on when the bleachers are folded up and, in effect, have two different floors.
Right, it's just actually the part against, it's like one row or two rows stacked up against the side there. So it's not a significant portion.
Okay.
But it's still, you know, one floor might be higher than the other, and they got to angle it down. And I don't imagine it being, it being a huge issue.
Yeah.
But it was something that was, I did like the idea of the same floor. And we talked about, you know, a new floor, an old floor, other elements shifting, those type of things, but.
But that portion would be anchored in the floor in the middle.
Our current floor is also anchored.
Yeah, but if you went with the basement, then maybe a floating floor. You'd have an anchored, yeah.
Right. And I'm sure they've done it before, but.
So there are two points of emphasis here. One, if this purchase is made, it's a building and grounds piece from April of 2017 referendum. That's where the funds come for that. And second, in order to be able to do a project of this size, you got to get on the calendar because this isn't a couple of days worth of work. This is a much bigger project than that. So, I don't want to say this phrase, but I guess, well, the ball is in your court in regards to what you want to, that was pretty sad, wasn't it? If you want to, I could have come up with something else, I guess. Is, is, it's up to you what, what you want to do in regards to the gym floor at the high school.
Well, I think it's been 45 years, right, 44, 45 years, so it's, you know, it's probably time. And I think, you know, it's, I know we've talked about it for a while about getting it done. So, I would make the recommendation to replace or move forward with the high school gymnasium floor with the recommended Jay Wood flooring, alright?
I'll second that. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, the-
Thank you for all of your work researching and looking into it all.
I don't think I'm going to actually send these back. I might put these on my mantle at home or something.
And I would be remiss if I did not mention the newly engaged Jeff Fern.
Oh, congratulations. Is that yesterday, like the big day?
You don't, oh!
It was not part of the big day, but we can talk about it after the meeting.
There's quite a story that goes with this.
It wasn't planned.
There's quite a story. It's worth the time to sit with Jeff and hear the story though. There would probably be a better story told by the future Mrs. Fern, probably.
You'll have to join us in the, in the room there after the meeting.
He's under guidance from the high school office staff, trying to work on things.
They have a committee meeting, you're the director.
Committee meeting. Alright, there is one last item, and one last action item for tonight's meeting, and that would be personnel.
Okay, bear with me, the list is a little lengthy in that we had some staff movement within- Okay, bear with me, the list is a little lengthy in that we had some staff movement within district and some other action too. So we have new employment and athletic contracts for Sally Hanks in school nutrition, Drew Johnson, Clubhouse assistant teacher, Sandy Johnson, a transfer from the intermediate to the elementary as a four-K para. Brittany Miller, transfer within the elementary to lower elementary. Sam Montana, a transfer within the intermediate to upper elementary. Madison Pease, uh, in Clubhouse, and Mitchell Pratt, who you met earlier, is a custodian here at the middle school. Retirements for Chuck Berry, that came in at ten o'clock this morning, so I don't have any words to share with you from Chuck. Tom Super, we'll all talk about in a moment, Steve Schiefer in high school science. Uh, Steve did not provide him anything, so we'll just have to make up some stuff about Steve, I guess. Uh, Ora Lee Shock, we'll talk about in June, uh, but we're going to accept it here this evening as principal at the intermediate. Lanay Seaman, school nurse, who I will talk about in a moment. And then resignations from Annie Brayton in soccer, Kerry Clark in school nutrition, Ashley Hanson, four-K para, Sandy Johnson, uh, resigned here, moving to the elementary. Brittany Miller, a move, Samantha Montana, a move, Madison Pease, a resignation, Jessie Rose for varsity football, Justin Shu for middle school boys' basketball, and Marcus Wilhelm as a para, and then the termination of the contract high school custodian, Joel Super. So, those are the personnel items, you know, you could act on those, and then I can talk to you about Tom and Lanay here in a moment.
Make a motion that we accept the personnel action. Second.
Okay, I have some words here from Tom Super, number of years in education, twenty, but I feel all my life, because life is a classroom, to use Tom's words. Uh, number of years in Amory, all twenty of those started, he actually has the date, November twentieth of two thousand, uh, at the middle school, finished at that building. It's been a great run, uh, special thanks to Mr. Benson, George Sigsworth, and the board for the opportunity to be employed with this amazing school district. Favorite memories, so many chances to be involved, student activities, skits, et cetera. One class in particular, fond memories of, of Dale Johnson's daughter, Devon's class. Never saw kids that loved to be pushed around the hallways in rolling garb, in, in rolling garbage cans so much in all my life. He was the cool custodian, apparently, that's what he says. Uh, witnessed many students come to little school, first scared sixth graders, and then eventually seventh graders that seemed to know what was what, and then eighth graders who knew everything. And then leave for the high school and probably start that whole process over again. Uh, fourth question, uh, looking forward to in retirement, staying active, um, won't start so early in the morning, got to love that, look forward to being able to come and go and take my time doing it, uh, spending some time with the guys in Wyoming, got some plans in Florida with some friends, uh, and planning a side job, a business in twenty-twenty-two. Again, thank you all, sorry I was unable to attend tonight in person, I had another meeting to attend. In closing, I bid you a very heartfelt goodbye. Go Warriors, Tom Super.
Thank you.
Very nice, yeah.
Yeah, Tom is a great guy, he was, he's been a great, uh, great person at the middle school, and I'm happy for him, but I hate to see him go, so, tough to replace.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Lanay Seaman, total years in education, twenty-eight, thirteen in Osceola, fifteen here in Amory, twenty-three as a certified nursing assistant and registered nurse programs for WITC. Uh, highlights, being able to bring my granddaughter to Clubhouse and spending time in her classroom, reading and playing, teaching medical abbreviations to the members of the high school pupil services meetings, Josh and I have good memories of that, by all means. The mouse chase in Principal Gould's office, uh, I came in one time and saw a bunch of mousetraps, so apparently there's, that's the rest of that story. Uh, the support and encouragement from staff and community members during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Future plans, she hopes to work as a substitute staff member here in Amory, active in classrooms of my grandchildren, uh, get behind the wheel of the RV or board a plane at a moment's notice to sing happy birthdays, uh, witness more firsts than lasts, celebrate with her family and friends, whatever people or occasions need to be celebrated. Plan to become certified as a parish nurse and continue providing education to the women of Wisconsin on topics relevant to the whole health as part of the Women, Wisconsin Women's Health Foundation. Look forward to spending time gardening, sewing, woodworking, cooking, enjoying the cold and snow from the inside with hot coffee and a good book. Thank you for the support and encouragement throughout my fifteen years as a staff member in the Amory School District. This administration and staff are second to none, and it has been my pleasure to work alongside such a talented group of individuals. They are all educators, and they have taught me very well.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Lanay, we will miss you also.
Um, you think that oftentimes we think of the school nurse, um, well, we don't think of the school nurse. And it's an unsung hero, um, that, that we just don't think of, of handling sick kids and immunization records and all of the things that have to go on, um, and, and then we had this last year, and, um, nobody knew how to deal with that, and I think Lanay played a huge role in-
She did.
Not only, um, getting us back to school, um, but getting us back to school as safely as we could, getting kids here, even though I know she was nervous about the situation, um, she just did an amazing job, really going through all that data and tracking and contact tracing and making sure that we could keep these doors open and get these kids in the seats where they belong. And honestly, a year of education this year is owed hugely to Lanay. And I would like to say a heartfelt thank you to her, and, um, sad to see you go, but a very valuable asset, especially this year.
A mentor shared with me long ago, if you're going to survive in this role, it was principal at the time, you need to laugh every day, and when you spend time with Lanay, you won't have any worries about that, because that's going to happen every day.
Good.
Okay, um, well, uh, we do need to go back into closed session, so I'll make a motion to- I think we didn't vote, yeah. Oh, yeah, okay, so you, Keith made a motion to approve the personnel, you made a second, I believe, Dale.
Erin and Sharon.
Sharon.
[laughing]
And so.
And, um, yes, I will, I will abstain from voting as I know one of the new employees.
Well, well.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the personnel action is approved, and I will make a motion to go into closed session to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personnel action pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one C and deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five-one E.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, uh, roll call, Erin?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
All right, yes, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.